Seven fifteen, actually, I think. Something like that. Because that clock doesn't work.
I'm gonna get that fixed, I promise.
Okay. So, anyway. First thing we're gonna do is the bylaws. I know Yoli, you weren't here at our last meeting, and I don't know if you've had a chance to read them, but we had Mr. Schumacher here. Paul Schumacher was here from the State Planning Board. What's the actual designation, Tom? Southern Maine Planning Board.
Regional Planning.
Regional Planning Board. And he went over these. He looked at them. And he found them fine to his... And we did vote on them, that we should all sign them. And since they are not signed, unless you find something egregious, you know.
I didn't have a good question.
Sounds good.
I don't know if, like, just in terms of referring to associate versus alternate for their wording, or would it, like, adjust our language elsewhere?
I think we've already adjusted it.
It's been adjusted everywhere. In this document.
Right. But I meant, like, because we always say all in the minutes and the...
Well, I know. Is associate. So, that's not our...
No, no, then are we gonna, like, in the minutes, stop, then refer to it as adjusted elsewhere?
You know, by any other name. By any other name. An associate member, like, tonight you are a voting member. Dennis. Taking... Don is on his way to Paris. So... But that is the correct term. So I guess we call, even in the minutes, it will be associate, not alternate.
Right. Going forward.
Going forward.
And then I wondered, under 3.1, under officers and their duties.
Yep.
Where it says, "Second sentence with the chair and vice chair shall leave all members of the board." Is the in situation that the executive secretary doesn't have to be a full member of the board?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Like, just when it comes... That they can be an associate.
They can be.
Okay. I don't know if it helps all to spell that out or not.
I don't think that it's necessary. What do the others think?
I don't think so. It just caught me, and it took me a while to, like... It just caught my attention.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
You want the ones who are sitting to shoot back to the office?
I made a copy that I would hope when everybody was ready that they... This is for you, Keith. I made one copy for everybody to sign.
This is the copy for everybody to sign.
Yeah. I'll scan it in. And someone asked the other day if we put it on our webpage, which I think is a good idea.
Yep. Exactly. And I actually have talked to one of the selectmen about this, and I told her that I would... Well, I'll probably wait to get Donovan's signature on this to present it to the selectmen, so that we have all...
Are the selectmen in agreement of the bylaws?
They don't have to be. Even though they approve us, they don't have to be. This is... What did Mr. Schumacher call it? This is... It's an internal working thing on our committee.
I say, I wondered about just the process of electing new members, because that's always been kind of sticky process. And I wondered...
The electing of new officers or replacing the officers?
Or board members.
Right.
And new board members.
Right.
Yeah.
That's why we worked on this for a long time to come up with a faster, more clear way of doing this.
Where the planning board makes recommendations to the selectmen.
Right.
Versus the selectmen just appointing somebody.
Yeah. Like I did with our selectmen.
Right.
Yeah.
But nobody ever... No, nobody ever told me. And that's when I tell him, I want to be honest, and says, "Yeah, sure."
Well, and I'll tell you, there are probably going to be times in the future where, you know, Jennifer can put something out, we can put something out, and nobody wants to be with us. And then we start looking at us and say, "Oh, Tom, do you know anybody?" Gavin, how about it? And we say, "Go ask." And then if we all find them, you know, reasonably sane, or at least as insane as the rest of us, we'll say, "Welcome aboard." You know? Not everybody... You know, it's funny, if y'all remember when the town did the junkyard or trash yard survey? They asked a lot of questions. And one of the things was, "Would you be willing to serve on this particular committee?" Not really. People, there was nothing. "Would you be willing to be on a town committee?" There was a number of people who are, would be willing to serve on a committee. So I think that...
Everyone, push comes to shove, and it's posted that there's an opening. A lot of times, there's a little hesitant.
Very little response.
Right.
So, you know, but we'll go forward with a positive look, you know, and go from there. And so, you know, if they've got a problem with it, with, you know, it's not... They're not hiring. They're just putting it out there. You know, this isn't a hired position for most states.
Appointed.
It's just an appointed position. Anything else? This is all what was approved at the last meeting. And otherwise, these are friendish copies. I'm going to start it down there. And your name is on their particular line. Excuse me. Thank you, Tom.
What we're doing is, if you notice on the agenda, I left last week's best part of the location on you.
Yeah, I know that. Okay. I thought it was familiar.
It is. Now, where she's on with share? I'm sorry? No. No. We do more than share.
No, I mean...
No, there's not anything on the...
Why?
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Is this time the people, you know, we need to get enough... We need to get enough foundation. That's what, you know... I think they have their...
Yeah. Did you date it?
Any appropriate. Eastern.
We have another thing that we didn't properly date that's coming back.
It's eighteen, right?
It's eighteen. It's not dated?
No, no, no. I said, we have had things come back to us that didn't have dates on them, so I'm sure.
Seems like just three days ago.
Right, no. That's right. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Since we have been off, a little bit off the schedule here, the approval of the minutes of our last meeting would be the October 4th meeting. I'd love to accept the minutes dated October 4th, 2018, as written.
Certainly.
On paper.
Can we entertain a question?
Yes, of course.
On the old business. What I posed my question about was concerning a conversation I had with a neighbor as to whether or not the board had set as a condition that there be no retail sales on the site.
Right.
And my folks that responded to that, Kenny, said that that was, that fact was mentioned on the plan as a condition.
Right.
In reflecting on that, I doubt very much if that was just a policy that Richard was putting forth that he was going to adhere to. But I frankly don't think anybody could hold it. It's like interfering in commerce.
I'm sorry, it's interfering with...
It would be interference of the town or someone to stipulate that to Richard, saying, "You can't sell the ground if you want to sell the ground."
Not really. I mean, we put that restriction, we put that restriction on Monarch, no retail sales.
Well, that would pertain to... This, I just have a hunch. It would be under the heading of interference with trade or something like that. If we were to have a challenge on...
You just had to do it. One day that once, they said that they were going to do no retail sales.
They said they weren't going to do it. And it was noted on their plan, no retail sales.
That has no bearing on the question of whether or not it's illegal. It has legal...
Well, if it is illegal, then, Tom, we have...
Yeah, I'm just bringing it up as...
Yeah, I know. But we would have to go back and... I'm wondering whether it's because of the size of the pit, because that is a small pit. It's not like Monarch, where we put that conditional use that there is no outside sales.
Well, it could offset there would maybe be more activity on the site that would otherwise be occurring. But I'm just saying, I...
Well, I think that's something that we need to look into. Is it illegal to put that kind of condition on?
Not illegal, maybe. You just have no way to enforce it.
Right. But you just used that word, so I did too.
I agree on what Tom's saying. I question the planning board's authority to put any stipulation, requirement, or whatever on anybody that isn't covered in our zone ordinance.
That's true. I agree with that. I mean, it's, I have read somewhere, and I can't remember exactly where, and I believe it was in the paperwork that I got from the planning board training.
Right.
Where it's not... I have it written down.
I might have it right in my...
Well, I didn't want to get it wrong down here, so I just thought I'd mention it.
Well, you started it, Tom. I agree with you.
So, Tom, you started it. Now, we're going to...
It's the World Series, folks.
I just, I have it. It's a Red Sox. Red Sox are winning the last games, so don't worry. Personal bias shall never enter the decision. We interpret policy, not make policy. And there's no regulating in excess of the ordinance.
Well, me...
So you're right, Tom.
I'm not concerned with whether I'm right or wrong.
Gavin, you have one?
I think we're kind of, maybe we're stumbling over the retail sales, because they, if we put, there will be no drive-up sales or drive-in sales, because they do go and deliver their material to someone and sell it to them, and that is a retail sale. They just don't accept someone driving in with their one ton and fill them up, because they're probably not going to be there all the time.
On-site sales or something like that.
Maybe we should, we could change our verbiage in the future, instead of retail, to say, "Drive-up sales" or "pick-up sales," or something like that that might help us with that.
But if it's not in our ordinance, I honestly, I don't believe it.
Well, it was something they came up with, because they weren't going to be there on the site that much. They're going to have someone sitting there at the little booth at the front, you know, taking cash.
Right. But in this case, that's true.
Right.
But, I mean, it's... We shouldn't, we shouldn't be putting conditions on if it's not in the ordinance.
Well, I think some of our other conditions were based on that there wouldn't be just random amounts of traffic, that the traffic would be predictable based on their flow that they created. And it wouldn't be just, you know, because it's hard to predict drive-up sales.
Okay.
So that, maybe it's played into the truck trips per day thing, but, I mean, they still probably would exceed that.
I appreciate that, Gavin, but there's also a thing in there about not driving past a school and the lights will flash. And there's nothing in our ordinance about that.
No.
And I don't think that we have the right to ask for that to be a stipulation.
I'm not sure about that, yeah.
What the definition of conditional use is, a use permitted only after review and approval by the planning board. A conditional use is a use that would not be appropriate without restrictions, but which, if controlled under the prescriptions, under the provisions of this ordinance, would promote the purpose of the ordinance. Such uses may be permitted if specific provisions for such conditional uses is made for these ordinance. Now, Don would sit here and tell you that's a whole lot of words to be paid. So I believe this is saying, and I would love somebody else to say, you know, "Look under conditional use" and tell me...
It's under definitions.
It's under definitions on page 22. That this is saying, we can put conditions on that that holds the ordinance, make the ordinance stronger, that support the ordinance.
We use it for... Yeah, I'm sorry.
Page 22, Gavin.
No, the page. Firstly, I think that says a whole lot of nothing. I mean, that's such circular reasoning that it means absolutely zip.
Whole lot of words in there.
That must have been written by a lawyer.
A bad word.
A bad word. I mean, it really is... That's why I say, what I got out of it was, if it supports, if it supports the ordinance, then it's okay. But, I mean, you know, that's awfully, awfully word... I think what we need to do is, is look at these things, but maybe look out for the verbiage we use and not put unnecessary conditions, or conditions we have no right putting on people.
I guess that's my point.
Definitely. I might refer you to page 38, if you're interested. Conditions of permit.
Of course, I'm interested. I'm a little interested.
That's kind of what we're talking about.
Where are you?
Middle of the page on 38 says, "Conditional uses, thence its definition, thence its conditions of permits. The planning board may issue a permit providing the following conditions shall be met. The proposed activity shall not: A, unreasonably interfere with the existing recreational navigation uses nor unreasonably alter scenic or aesthetic qualities; B, unreasonably interfere or harm the natural environs of any lake, pond, tributary, stream, or river or harm fish or water habitat; E, cause unreasonable soil erosion or lower the quality of the waters; G, unreasonably alter the natural floor, storage capacity of any water body; and E, create or cause to be created unreasonable noise or traffic of any kind." So it does, it does give us a little bit of leeway to work with these sort of statements and on a case-by-case basis.
The key word is unreasonable.
Well, I think the other one is, or traffic. That's where we might be able to say, "Cease trucks during that, you know, the school children coming out."
But the problem with that choice is, you have...
Unreasonable traffic.
Well, the town has increased the traffic of big trucks going by the school.
Mm-hmm.
The town itself has. The biggest reason is when they closed the hopper off. So all the trucks that were going down the hopper to New Hampshire now go down Milton Mills Road.
Right.
You have logging trucks that go down Milton Mills Road. You have gravel trucks. You've got, I mean, all kinds of... And I just think saying, and there's no, there's no stipulation on when they can go through there. I mean, they're speaking on it there for a reason. And, I mean, the town has even been hauling gravel out of the school during the school day when the kids are out on the playground. So I think it's unreasonable for the planning board to say to anybody that they can't go one way or the other on, say, like Milton Mills Road in any given time, because everybody else can. You know, they're doing a lot more than what these guys are doing.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just using this as an example.
Oh, I know. I understand what you're saying. I do understand.
It doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay. Maybe we should get back to the minutes.
Look at 6.6.3. That tells you exactly what your conditions are. Page 9 at the top. This is in addition. Okay.
Page 9?
Page, yeah, page 90. 6.6.3.8. Everybody has that? Yeah, I can tell they're reading.
So that opens that wide up again.
It opens it wide up again.
Yeah, so there's conflict in our ordinances.
No, this allows for some reasoned consideration to be given that are not adequately spelled out in the...
In addition, in the ordinance.
Yeah. Yeah, that just gives us a little bit more leeway to...
That is the supporting language to shore up what the ordinance might be saying in very broad terms. But, you know, I think we're coming on a time, because I do want to get back to the minutes, where we are going to have, we've got a lot of review work to do. And the comprehensive plan is one thing. But then I think we have to look at our ordinances and go through those a bit at a time and see what may need to be changed. I think very well, again, I'm straying from the thing, but we need to think about a hoof-and-fowl ordinance. We don't have one in town.
A what?
Hoof-and-fowl ordinance. We don't have one.
Look at the controversy that's caused.
Look at the controversy that has caused. And New Hampshire has a very broad one. And, you know, it all depends. Where do you live? You know, are you in a farming area? Are you resource protected? Are you waterfront? I mean, you know, lakeshore? All different stories. But what we always have to remember is that if we write an ordinance, and the ordinance goes through the process and it is accepted, that ordinance is for everybody on every street that it pertains to. So, you know, but I think that is really, with current events, that's coming to the forefront. We need to be very mindful of that. So, at that, in thinking we should go over these things, can we move on to the rest of the minutes?
What's unbelievable, Tom, side of this?
I know.
He hasn't even really said much sense. He's not...
Bring it up.
Are you sorry you said that?
Yeah, we moved quickly from retail sales to other conditions that we imposed that weren't in the...
That's true.
But I did happen, one right in the, under call to order, just says, second line. I was just thinking, Southern Maine Regional Planning and Development regarding bylaws and the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Because he did discuss that.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
So maybe we add that in there.
Absolutely. Comprehensive plan and...
And the workshops, possible workshops.
And possible workshops.
With whatever...
Yeah, with other communities, would that suffice?
Yeah.
But if we got water, we're...
Yeah. Because I think it would be a good idea, because we'd just get more people at the meeting, and it would be more work to offer.
Right. Exactly. The lunches aren't bad either, so, you know.
Right.
All in favor with the correct additions?
It wasn't here.
Thank you. Okay, Gavin?
Yeah.
Passed. So the meetings, the minutes are accepted as directed. And I will sign those since Don is with you. Will you get them done? Now, as you know, new business correspondence. In there, you all have a copy of an email that we received from Mr. William Gannon about the situation to the property of 773 13th Street. He's obviously done a lot of homework. He's looked at this, and he is asking, going right down to the last sentence in his email. "He has only asked with regards to the property at 773 13th Street Act in May that code enforcement enforce these provisions as written and eliminate the non-permitting use of the property with rights with regards to accessory structures and manure storage." It is actually not previewed, purdued to do that at this point. Mr. Paul has given the property owner until November 3rd to come up, to meet a list of priorities that perhaps will take care of every one of the issues stated in the remainder of Mr. Paul's email, where he starts talking about, you know, different manure utilization guidelines. And he's talking about other enforcement administration. And I don't believe these come from the agricultural thing, although they might. But these are amended ordinance lists from June 16, 2018, so I'm not sure we have any real reference to those. But the bottom line is this. We've received this letter. We respond to all our correspondence. And I wrote back that, "At this time, the planning board sees no reason we need to address the 13th Street issue. We are aware that the CEO has given the property owner until November 3rd to address all the issues. If after that date you still have concerns, please contact the CEO to determine what possible actions may be deemed necessary." And I try to stay right down the middle, very neutral. Tom had some comments about that. And he, the wording he would like to use is, "We share in your concern over the situation on 13th Street. However, we understand that the resolution of the property is currently being addressed by CEO Ken Paul. And we would be acting beyond the scope of our authority, the authority of the planning board, if we were to get involved at this time. We appreciate your patience and..." We appreciate your patience and promise to stay informed about the resolution of this property." That's what Tom would like us, something like that to say, and I did read it verbatim. I would say flatly outright, I have a problem with that because I don't think it's neutral to, "We share your concern over this situation." Right there, that tells them we're in your ballpark. You know, we are there. We really, we can't say that. If this issue were to go to court and got nasty, we could be called upon, you know, "Well, the selectmen said this, the CEO said that, but the planning board agrees with us." We can't do that. We can only go by ordinances and be very neutral about it. As much as I would probably complain like anybody else if there were an issuance in my neighborhood, we still have to stay neutral. And I don't feel that saying "we share your concerns" is necessarily staying neutral. And I, the, two of the people were out in the office and spoke directly to me. And I told them that's, you know, I said, "I'm paraphrasing, but I'm gonna tell you right now. We know that he has been given until November 3rd. And we can't do anything, I'm not gonna nod Ken's knees out from under. We are not gonna be, we cannot be involved in any way. After November 3rd, you are more than welcome to come back to us if they want to know how to make appeals. Land use office can tell them how to do that. But I don't want to go beyond our scope or give the appearance of going beyond our scope of authority in this matter." That's how I feel, Tom. Up to you.
Just very briefly, I didn't want to spend a lot of time on this this evening, but when I read over the draft, I felt that since Mr. Sheehan is not an applicant per se in front of the planning board, he's not submitted anything to Ken for consideration or anything. This was essentially a water quality issue.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna stop you right there. Who is Mr. Sheehan and where is he mentioned in this letter?
Mr. Sheehan is the property owner.
Is what?
Isn't he the name of the property owner?
No, Sweeney.
Sweeney, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Sweeney. There is no application in front of the board, this board, and you're merely commenting on a situation that on the surface would seem to be a water, what's the term I'm looking for, a degradation of the water.
Well, that's not even listed in his letter.
I know. What I'm trying to say is, I'm merely expressing my opinion and I was, in the first sense, assuming that the board would be concerned about a water quality issue that has been, I don't know if you want to use the word aggravated or compromised by the activity on the site.
But we don't even know that that has happened, do we?
We know that it hasn't happened.
We know that, yeah, that's my understanding. It has not happened.
That's what Kenny, the DEP had been out there twice.
Yeah, exactly.
Kenny had been out there a couple of times. And he said there was 75-foot vegetation, I believe he said, from the site to the water. And there was ample vegetation.
He did say there was a good 75-foot buffer.
And there's ample vegetation. And the water testing and stuff that was done, there was no implication of any pollution. And the ordinances in here that's referred to, I mean, Kenny responded to all very professionally and very fanatically. And anybody that really knows the ordinances, there's a lot of gray area in these ordinances. A lot to interpretation. And what Bill was referring to, where he updated his own ordinance in June, was what we changed at the town meeting in June. And, but all this is his interpretation. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm 100% behind Kenny's interpretation. And I think, I don't know if, I think we ought to just, we're nothing to deal with at this time.
The only reason...
It's not about business, I guess, at this time.
Well, this is what I think I'm telling him very politely in this. We're aware of the situation, but at this time, we have no reason to be involved. And afterwards, in November, if there's something different, he can come back. They can come back.
And ask us to work on something different.
And ask us to work on something different. Or if they want to see the, you know, if they want to apply for variances or something like that, they are welcome to do that. And we are, we're here to help. People need our help when it is our responsibility to do that. But before that, and, I mean, I seriously don't think it's a good idea to make it too emotional. I think it needs to be professional, business-like, this is it, and, you know, and let them know that the door's open.
We have to make sure that we are non-biased.
We are non-biased. That's the whole thing.
Because we have to treat everyone equally before us, exactly the same.
Right, right.
But even on November 4th, if they come back and they say nothing has happened, what does this board do?
Nothing.
Nothing. We tell them that you have to deal with it.
We don't deal with it.
We are not enforcing. So they can come back, they can come back and say that, and we're very happy to say...
That's what I tried to explain to them, is that if Ken isn't enforcing this correctly, you set the policy, he enforces it. If he's not enforcing it correctly, they would do an administrative appeal to the zoning board.
Yeah.
And the zoning board is the only one that has authority to override Ken in that.
And that's...
That's a purpose of it.
That's exactly, you know, he can come back, they can come back, and if that's what's necessary.
There's also right-to-farm statutes in every state, which, wouldn't that take precedence over our ordinances anyway?
I wouldn't even think to get into that at this point. It may or it may not. The bottom line is, we don't have a place in this issue right now. And we can be very, you know, land use office, in fact, when Ms. McManus was talking to me, you know, I told her if there was something that she needed and we didn't have it at the moment, she could go get a Freedom of Information Act. Because everything is, sign the papers, you'll get it. You know, they can have anything they need to have. We support their right for that. We support their right for what they're doing, but we're not involved. You know, we're not involved. And because there are many issues that I've heard personally that, you know, are they selling animals? No, they're not selling anymore. Well, they're selling animals again. Well, if you want somebody to get rid of their animals, I would assume they're gonna sell their animals. You know, I mean, there are too many issues that we have nothing to do with. And, you know, if it comes, if other things come into it that involve us, we're right there. So, any other comment?
I thought it encapsulated that view, but what seemed to cause the difficulty is, "We share in your concern." And quite frankly, because the gentleman has no application in front of the board and he's being, the situation is being, quote, currently being addressed by the CEO, that we would indeed, I understand, and this is where I dovetail your sensibilities in, we would be acting beyond the scope of the authority of the planning board if we were to get involved at this time.
It basically is the first sentence, Tom.
Maybe if you had said, "We understand your concern," instead of "we share."
Okay, that's...
Well, it might have been a better word, which, you know, you're acknowledging that there's a problem, they have a problem.
Yeah. I didn't want to have language in there that would give Mr. Gannon and companies the impression that we were ignoring their concerns.
They said to me, "They know that, well, we see the same three of you there. We know you're listening and you know what's going on." I know you and, sorry, Dennis, Leslie and I have been to every meeting that they've been at. They know we're fully aware of it.
Just for the record, Joyce, call me you. It really isn't the worst name I've ever called. So I'm fine.
I think we need to go to executive session. There must be a statute out there somewhere.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
That we adopt Leslie's amendment there and that we change the first sentence of my draft to, "We share in your..." What was it?
"We understand your concern."
We don't hear anything.
And go on from there with the cashier draft, but I'm not gonna lose sleep over this, so.
Okay. And I will rewrite it, email it out, because it has been sitting...
Can't you just type?
Sorry?
Can't we just make a motion?
That was an option.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay. So I'll come in tomorrow to send it out from here because we've had the save days and I think that's quite a while to wait for a reply. So I'll come in here tomorrow and...
But they know we only be there twice a month also.
But, you know, and send it out. And Ken has seen this, and the one thing he did tell me, this does go out over my name as chairman, because acting planning board is not, that could come from a single person. And so that'll be the thing, but this will be the change right here. Okay, good. Comprehensive plan, housekeeping, best practical education, just cross that out. That was left there in error, that we did at our last meeting. And this is, they're increasing by 50%, these people, but they are using this original foundation and they're not gonna approach on the water and all of that. So on to comprehensive plan. I'm gonna have to put zoning ordinance on their list. It's becoming quite clear that things are moving very quickly in town. When you think of the buildings and new buildings that are going up and the potential of another subdivision, 27 houses coming down the road very quickly, we need to see where we're going. Dennis brought in some information?
Yeah.
And he might want to share?
I brought in tonight, I got this from Jennifer. What it is, is a record of what the land the state of Maine owns in town and the town of Acton owns and the cemeteries. And this is the amount that is exempt from taxation, which totals up to $9,550,036. That's a lot of money. But then the second part was a block, it was more complicated. This is tree growth in town. And what I wanted was the tree growth in the conservation land, and you can help me with this, Tom, the conservation land and the resource protection. And they, the assessor, said they couldn't separate out the tree growth from the resource protection.
Oh, Ken, it's not stored that way. The data is entered, entered in such manner that he can pass that out.
That's what, apparently, because some of the tree growth is in resource protection and some resource protection isn't in tree growth. So I think it was more work than without the planning board, chair officially asking for this information. Obviously, it'd take a lot more work than what was done. But the tree growth is 2 million. No, that's not the total number.
2,94,000.
No, because it's 1,294,30 for softwood, plus acreage. I'm sorry. I was reading wrong again.
So you gotta add the whole together, next to the other?
Right.
The values, not the acreage, yeah?
And the other end is a value, so we got, is it 1,000, 2,000, 3,000, 4,000? Somewhere between 5,000 and 6,000 in tree growth.
Can I ask you a question, Dennis?
Oh, cool.
Why is this the purview of the planning board?
Because it has to do with the comprehensive plan, Tom. When you read the comprehensive plan, we get into the preservation of the land.
We haven't decided that we're gonna be discussing the complaint.
Well, she just said we were going to.
I'll actually...
Not this evening.
No, but this...
This is coming out of nowhere.
Well, it's...
It's on our agenda almost every week. And when, now we've been here, we started late, we've actually worked in 45 minutes. And when we have a little bit of time to knock some of this off, that's what we have to do. So he's just bringing it to our attention to, as we're looking at this and going through it and familiarizing ourselves, we'll have more knowledge.
Listen, this may be a premise behind this that would say that we can't afford to conserve land or something.
No, that's not, this is, this is what I was gonna ask you, Tom. Three Rivers, for example, okay? I don't know this, and that's why I'm asking you. The land that they own, is that automatically like in tree growth? Or how's that listed?
I'm not gonna try and answer that question. I defer to you to Kenny to call David on that question. There was a little article in our last newsletter that I think I distributed to Bulb, my lawyer on board, Madge Baker. And she was formerly a land use lawyer and was the director of Southern Main Regional Planning. And now she's a board member of Three Rivers. So we were aware of some concerns over the, some confusions over the issues of taxation and land trust work and conservation lands in general. So we had a little article in there.
Well, I read that, Tom, Ken.
But outside of the comment of, this is maybe not appropriate discussion for coming out of the blue, worrying about the finances involved with conservation work in the middle of the planning board.
No, no, Tom, what else, it wasn't the finances. Like in here, it says all the places that are tree growth, okay? Three Rivers Land Trust isn't listed in this. So that land belongs somewhere.
Well, which property, do you guys, is it the farm or the...
Or, well, the farm, the farmland, I'll use an example, Larry Doyle. He's got it in here, his open space, right? But I don't see, say like the Hogs Farm or the one that was packed in, different places like that, I don't see any record of the land. I don't see any record of the land that is exempt from normal taxation, I guess. You know what I mean? Because this is what we're going to look at.
A little like the Hobbs Farm isn't in tree growth. I mean, not the whole property anymore. I don't know personally.
Yeah.
But a lot of it would have to be in farmland probably because it's open fields at the hay and they, so that part of the property wouldn't be in tree growth.
No, who owns that one? Yeah.
The Hobbs Farm?
Yeah. Who's that on the tree growth?
That, that's why we brought it up.
But, but see, it isn't in here.
Well, this is only tree growth, though. So, if it was under farm and forest, it wouldn't be, like my property, isn't listed in here. I'm under farm and forest. I'm, I'm not, I'm not paying normal taxes. I'm not in tree growth. I have a forest management plan, but it, when it comes down to, if you're farm and forest, the difference between farm and forest and tree growth is tree growth, the main reason for your forest management plan is commercial timber production. But if you're in farm and forest, your for, the main reason for your forest management plan could be wildlife preservation or, or water quality or sugar maple habitat or something like this, it wouldn't, so it's not necessarily tree growth. There's more tax brackets that are, than, than are represented here.
And what I was looking for, because of the comprehensive plan, it talks about the amount of land, I don't remember if it gave it exact amount, but that we, that there's a community we need to put into conservation or we should put into conservation. That was the premise of me asking for this information.
Yeah.
And then, and then what I ended up getting was, no answer. When it comes to the conservation land. And, and so it's not, it's not about the tax.
Well, I think each tax will be different. When we talk about conservation land, some parcels would be farm and forest, some parcels would be in tree growth, some parcels would just be in regular.
What's the acreage gap, I guess, is what, is what.
Oh, well, that, you'd have to, I don't know how you would find that out, yeah. But it would, it's just because you're dealing with so many different tax, you know, multiple tax brackets.
See, I didn't ask for the dollar amounts. What I would ask for was the acreage.
Yeah.
And because I was interested in, there's some towns that they like to have a certain percentage of their acreage in conservation. You know, whether it's.
Right.
5%, 3%, 10%. And, and, and there was talk about it in the comprehensive plan. So, I'm like, well, I wonder how much we got that's in conservation? And I thought it was a legitimate question. And this is what I've got.
And it's, it's not the money part.
No, it's not the money part at all.
At all. It's, it's the acreage.
It's the acreage. And, and, and I'd just like to know how much we got. And do we need to just, if, when the comprehensive plan, do we need to work in that, that we need to add another 5% to conservation, but we already, what's already in conservation?
I think I really understand where you're going and I think that highlights a very important thing. We're going to start tonight at 7 o'clock, not at 5 after 8. Going through piece by piece in here, decide on a section, we'll go through that. And if we need to gather more information, like the number of acres, that's what we'll do. We'll get all our ducks put in a row. And so, we can, when we, when we have meetings that are on the lighter side as far as issues, we can spend 30, 40 minutes. And that way, you know, there's an old saying, "How do you eat a frog?" "One bite at a time." One bite at a time. So, we take this and we go one bite at a time. And, you know, we're not going to get this done, we may not get this done this, in the next six months. It, it, several years to do it, but we have to start. And so, we'll just keep plugging at it. Is that agreeable?
I would like to see a little more information on some conversations with Ken on this process.
Well, it really is a planning board process. And as such, you, it's certainly welcome to talk to Ken, but it is not code enforcement. It's my goal.
I mean, the comprehensive plan definitely needs to be updated.
Absolutely.
With this, this information in there, and I'm just going to use the school, for example, this information in there that we need to get a ball field for the school and a soccer ball for the school and this and that, well, that's all been accomplished. So, and, and our student population's gone down and I think it may have come about an addition on the school. So, there's things that, kind of like a bylaws, except a little more involved, obviously, but it just needs to be updated. I don't see nothing wrong with the comprehensive plan other than it's updated and some of the stuff needs to be addressed.
Exactly.
My concern would be that we're going on a fishing expedition before we have some sense of whether it is a overhaul, so to speak, or whether we can continue the way we have been going as Kenny's census, I guess you'd call it, of problems that fall in the same category. You could probably give me one that we've addressed over the past few years where he will get complaints or issues arising from applications that focus on a, maybe an area of the ordinance that is too restrictive.
I think the ADU was a good example of that, that they passed last year, because there wasn't anything to allow for.
Building, you know, I mean.
Well, no, it was more even multifamily housing.
It was an additional.
In-law party.
It was, yeah.
Quote, in-law party. And you couldn't do it. So, you fixed that in the last.
But it, it might be interesting with the plan and go through and see what, check off what has been accomplished. Well, exactly. I mean, that is part of the process.
Most of it, it can, I mean, is, hasn't changed. I mean, it still fits what we're doing today and what we need to do.
It isn't, it's not a rewriting, it's not a step from zero. It's updating. I mean, do we need to build a new school now? No. It doesn't need to be in there. The way we're growing, do we need more ADUs? Absolutely.
No.
So, I mean, it is that kind of thing. Do, I, I had to laugh yesterday, I saw some very pretty, I saw some very nice pictures on Facebook from the Cemetery Association. And I don't know if the number is right, but they said we have 80 cemeteries in Acton. Some of them are single. Some of those are single, great, well, it doesn't matter, but if we want to, but maybe we should be thinking of building, you know, 62-plus communities because we certainly got this, this, we may not offer them universities or fancy things. But we certainly have cemeteries for them, you know, I mean.
And a lot of cemeteries at the time are pretty much filled up.
Right. I mean, you know, it's.
That's why you get so many.
Little ones all over the place. But I mean, there are a lot of things we could look at. And we have to make a start. I guess that's my biggest thing. We have to make a start in cemeteries or, or it always, it never comes forward. May I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I got a quick question. What happened to the best practical?
That, that's from a double thing. That's the one I said take it off the.
Oh, I see. All right.
A template is used for.
I wanted to see if you, if you people read my agenda. I guess you do.
Let me just check to the agenda.
Second, second. Thank you all.